I'm calling to order the city council study session today, Monday, September twenty-six. Um, and we go right into our discussion. Who is introducing the ethics ordinance?
Um, I can bring it up.
Thank you.
All right. Microphone here. Putting on my microphone so everybody can hear me. Okay, um, we do have our ethics ordinance before council tonight. There is a discussion to be had on the revised ethics ordinance that was, talked about previously, and additionally, council member Kness submitted another ethics ordinance sample, which was emailed out to everybody, and council member Miller also submitted comments later this afternoon that was sent to everybody on council. So there are things that were made, changes that were made to the draft ethics that had been discussed previously, and those are outlined in red on your or in your packet on the draft and open it to council for further discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much, council. Any discussion?
You said the red was discussed previously?
These are things that were suggested at previous meetings, on things that were written down and I took and put into the ethics ordinance after those discussions.
And some of the other ones?
What's that?
I don't remember having a conversation about some of these items that I read.
I don't either.
We definitely did not discuss four point five G. And I don't remember or H.
So were these, were these put in after, I know you had solicited feedback at one point
Right.
On August, before the August, or after, after the August eighth meeting? And then again, after the August fifteenth meeting?
Yes.
I don't really actually remember having a discussion with all of you present on this ordinance. It looks like we still have one missing to discuss it. Well, right, it was kind of last time. It was missing. So do we table it since Jalen is missing?
I think it's good to discuss it. I, I think I would encourage you all to continue this discussion so that this can move forward.
Okay.
Questions that you have or suggestions that you have to discuss those now.
Okay, I'm ready to discuss my portion. I think this has just become a witch hunt. We've run amok on a basic ordinance by injecting all kinds of specific. It's ridiculous. We have, we're being compelled to go to meetings now. If we are under criminal investigation, we have to withdraw from council. Where would it all this come up? I mean, how does, how did we go from this, an ordinance to all this other stuff?
But where are we being compelled to go to meetings?
Six months into being elected, you need to go to a meeting.
Can you give us a page number that you're speaking to?
Well, it's highlighted in red. It's one of those red interjections.
But can we have a page number so we can all be on the same page and prove the residence? Is it, yeah, can you give us some more detail where it's at?
Okay, so one says any council member or city official under criminal investigation, that's
I'm sorry.
Four, four point G.
Thank you.
Page seven.
Thank you.
Page seven. Why is that in there? And who injected that?
I personally think that if anyone is under criminal investigation, especially if it's a felony, that they should not be serving on the council, and if I'm not mistaken, it's also a state law at this point that was injected after, oh god, that was twenty fifteen or sixteen.
Who injected it in this ordinance?
Right. I'm just giving you the background of why and now who interjected. These are all suggestions, so they're not really interjected.
Well, anyways. I think we've gone way beyond a simple ethics ordinance.
I think that personally, that if someone is under investigation, or someone that has a criminal background with a felony, they should not serve. That is
Well, they shouldn't have been elected. Than being under investigation, because everyone is presumed innocent until proven guilty. That should be brought up at an election. File a complaint that doesn't prove anything, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's not a complaint, it's under investigation, and it's, I mean, it's standard practice in law enforcement and, and
You know, when your family member is involved, or another family member, but another city council member is involved in it too.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
Yeah.
Do you understand what I mean by that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to What does that have to do with being a, a council member being investigated for felony, though?
Well, what the, why there is an investigation and who's
And so right now, the only thing that we're talking about is what Barb brought up, gee, which is any council member or city official under criminal investigation shall be placed on leave until investigation is completed or dismissed. Not anyone else, but just council member or city official. So that's, I'm just reading what it says. I'm not trying to go back and forth, you know, with, I'm just reading. So I'm just trying to figure out what did that have to do with Bruce's wife? That's all.
Yeah, this is
I believe this was added in because of a specific situation. I don't think it just came into view.
Okay, but again, what I'm asking is, this, let's talk about what we see in front of us and what's fact. What does this have to do with a council member or a city official under criminal investigation?
Someone filing a complaint doesn't prove anything.
Okay.
So you want to say someone's convicted, but I believe that was already in our previous ethics ordinance.
Well, that's in the charter.
Okay.
Okay, so if all of this is in our charter, why are we updating this?
You can go ahead. Well, I'm just gonna take from a legal standpoint, though. It may doing, having this applied to someone that is under investigation could pose some murky areas, I, I do have to say, like, for instance, say someone had a drunk driving. That could be also under what, what you're saying, that could also apply. And I don't know if that's something, you know, that would be appropriate, and offenses of that level, and things of that nature. Whereas, you know, the conviction is more of a and, and just saying investigation is rather open-ended, you know, and what are we really getting to here? You know, what is the real benefit of that at that point? I think there's other ways that it could be handled, you know, and the public is made aware that this is a non-going issue. I necessarily think it's to the benefit, maybe to have that some
I agree.
Okay. What else do you got? Anyone?
We're letting Jalen set up first.
No, we're gonna keep going.
Okay, council shall make every effort to ask staff clarifying questions regarding items in a meeting packet prior to public meetings. Okay, so we're getting our packets on Friday night. When do we have a chance to talk to staff to clarify issues in a packet before a meeting, if we're working all day Monday? I'd like that removed.
What page is that? Can you please?
Six, six H.
He says page six.
Six.
In the, in the
And the number says H. It's a blue H, and it's in red.
So I just have a, I'm reading it from a computer somewhere. Is it in the box H, or, I mean, such, thank you.
I, yeah, I don't know how to tell you.
Okay, so.
So that's something that, um, whether we look at this from the perspective of when you receive the packet, I believe that there's ample time for you to ask questions. Otherwise, we'll have to start getting information a week prior to when the council meeting is and posting it at that time, and not put anything additional in it. Because there are questions that are raised here that take up considerable time, that could be asked directly of staff prior to the meetings. And it also gives us a chance to be able to answer those questions if you ask them in advance of the meeting. When you hit us up at the meeting, we may not have the answers in front of us to be able to give to you. And most of those questions are things that have to do with the dispersment report or minutes, you know, if you see a typo that's in there, it's really easy to just, you know, send me an email or pick up the phone and say, hey, I noticed a misspelling or this word is the capitalized, or whatever that may be, in the minutes, rather than bringing those up during comments. So it's just something that I'm trying to ask of staff or of council members to ask staff those clarifying questions. And, and you're welcome to ask it at the meeting as well, but it gives us the chance to be prepared on some of those that you do ask.
Okay, agree. Given, given our packets in timely manners, that does give us two full days to ask questions. So I would agree wholeheartedly. But when the packets are delivered Friday night at eight, nine o'clock, that really doesn't give us much of an opportunity to reach out to staff, other than Monday, and we're all in a crunch. I don't know about the rest of you, but that, today's my busiest day.
I think the language just efforts would address
And that, and that's obvious, and it's obvious that we're gonna be doing that anyway. We're not trying to come here and make these meetings go on and on and on. I don't find that that's the issue or the case for me, at least. Well, that's the other thing, yes, residents, once they see the packet, they have questions. And it hasn't been a practice that questions are answered in a timely manner.
Well, I think that's more of a, a different issue than what we're addressing here as far as after the talk, you know, if they're not, if they're just figuring you know, to work, you think it should be, then that's a separate issue, but I don't think that they should be asked in a timely manner.
But how does this qualify as ethical? How does this fit into an ethics ordinance, having to ask questions prior to a meeting?
Just guidance.
Well, that's guidance, but not ethics. Behavior.
I agree with that. That could actually be moved down to your policies and procedures, which is, yeah, it's the bottom of the ethics ordinance, if that's what you would prefer as council. I, I don't mind doing that. I would just hope that as council, you'd make every effort to at least contact me over the weekend, you know, you guys are able to get ahold of me most generally, so I'm, I'm happy to answer questions and work with you on that. It's just difficult adding meetings to try to answer those questions on the spot if staff wasn't prepared for that.
Think we should add, as long as the packet was received by Thursday evening, as it's supposed to be according to the charter, then that could be could be in effect.
I think the city attorney said something to that effect already. She did say I think it's covered by the saying
Well, it is covered, but it isn't, it isn't followed, so if it isn't
No, well, we're just, we're just talking about what your correction was, not what's going on. It was where Leanne already said that Leanne, Leanne already, this word, okay, Leanne had already said that we're gonna put as, if possible, in there, so that is something
Possible, is there, I want to make sure that the charter is followed, because that
So if possible
To the rules, we're adding it to the rules, and that should be added.
When possible.
To your rules, no, when, when we have a conference, but What's next? Can I add that it would part of the ordinance that no sitting council member family or family member should be attending any meeting where the sole purpose is to devise a plan to remove a fellow council member?
Oh, that's gonna be a little, that's gonna be a little touchy, because all of our spouses are residents also Lathrop, and I want to make sure that that is something, that's for all spouses.
But am I the only one that finds that unethical?
I find it very, I find it interesting also, but the fact is, when you're doing rules, you gotta remember that those rules go for everybody, not just for certain people.
I think it should go for everybody.
I don't think realistically, you can determine what someone's sole purpose for attending a meeting is.
No, I didn't say the sole, the sole purpose of the meeting, that was the sole purpose of the meeting was to remove a fellow council member.
And they don't lose their constitutional rights to participate in government.
Okay, good to know, good to know. There'll be other such meetings in the neighborhood.
Good, I think that's, more, more activity, the better. People should be involved.
A public meeting, now I'm speaking of, yes.
I didn't know it was a public meeting. I wasn't invited.
No, it was a private, it's someone's Right, right, that's, so I'm just clarifying that these rules are only related to what we're doing here.
Right.
So anything that may have occurred isn't really relevant to the issue.
We have very different ideas of what ethical is.
But you know
Behavior, but that's okay. Go ahead, keep going.
But what's interesting is that, before we continue with that, is that, um, I want to make sure that when we go forward, that we are identifying things that are fair amongst all of us. And making sure that it's not just something that is happening on this for the moment. This is gonna be something that's gonna continue when we're off of council. So being angry or being in a certain feeling emotional right now, this is not just for now, this is for later too, so.
Not emotional, it's truly how I feel. It's unethical, but that's my opinion. There's four others who can decide.
Also, was that a meeting that was talking about how we're gonna hire our city attorney that was done downstairs in a public place?
How we're hiring our city attorney?
Yeah.
We have a city attorney.
No, before we were hiring, was that after him? This little, this one, this video that was done, that I got, that has your husband on it discussing how we're gonna hire our city manager.
City manager, you just said city attorney.
Your city, I could be mistaken, but the point is
Well, we're not discussing how we're
That's the same thing with being at someone else's house. So the fact is, is that we shouldn't be trying to point out one person's flaw when other things have been
I'm not saying it's a flaw.
But you're saying it's unethical, so is it unethical that Tom was at a meeting that was talking about
We didn't hire a city manager.
And talking about me and Bruce also.
Talking about you and Bruce doing what?
Oh, lots of stuff.
Did he talk about removing you from council?
No.
Okay, there we go.
But the point is, but the point is, you know, let's, let's make sure we stay on task. Let's make sure that we stay on task before pointing a finger to someone else, that there's other things that's done the same exact way. Just want you to know. We're not talking about financial things.
And why do you have copies of it?
Cause I pointed it, I keep telling you all that.
I, I can't get anything. I've been waiting for
That's your problem, if I'm not getting your stuff. I got mine, so I paid my fifty dollars, but let's get back, you're right, let's get back, that's your next issue.
Okay. I just think we should start from scratch. There's a lot of, how long have we been going with our original ordinance? Since nineteen fifty-three? Karen and I and Jalen get elected, and all of a sudden, that's not good enough?
No, I think we should, I think the reason why we did this is that we needed to put some have some structure in it, because we have gone haywire since this particular state. I mean, let's be honest.
Right.
Okay, and I'm being honest in that, and that's, you know, not pointing a finger to anyone. So now it's just about having some structure and some protocols and policies in place, and that's why we're revisiting. And if you're saying that we're gonna follow something from nineteen fifty-three, which I was not born yet, that's kind of, you know, we do, we need to have it updated.
I'm just saying, we did perfectly fine with it since nineteen fifty-three.
But things have changed. I mean, civil rights happened after nineteen fifty-two.
Sure, then why didn't we update it after civil rights?
So we're doing it now. Just keep in mind that this does not apply to this here, does not
I agree, I agree. I totally agree.
Intended to be against one person, it applies to you all.
And to boards
And to future councils.
And the future councils.
So if we can keep moving through what other changes or edits would you like to have added to opposed to, or to discuss any of them that are already in the plan interest.
Okay, go to number one, intent and purpose, page two. Number E, making an official decision outside of proper channels.
Okay.
What, tell me what, what's that about?
Meaning as a
Yeah, I don't, I put a question mark. I'm not sure intent and purpose.
Right, it's to, to keep saying that that is not, not an ethical action as elected and non-elected and, and everyone that is a city employee or acting on behalf of the city, there's a set procedure for how things need to be, need to go.
Right.
So acting outside of those parameters would be a violation, an ethical violation, as well as potentially some other
Well, how can you make an official decision outside of?
If you, for instance
Yeah, give me, for instance.
The council act as a council, so your decisions are a council decision. You cannot tell a resident or go to the consultant, or go to a, you know, a contractor or someone and make a decision. Portraying yourself to be the decision maker for the city. So to do that, if you were to do that, that would be a violation, because you're making decision outside of the parameters of what
Does that go to Susan's point? She sent an email today saying we are not to go to outside of we have to go through her channel to have discussions or ask questions from contractors. Okay.
Correct, so that is something that is in the charter, that's, that gives you that, that framework for how you are to we're still residents, we're still residents, and this is taking breaks and going as a resident.
But you're a city council member, which Not for this, take this first and foremost, you are a city council person, you're a part of the elected body and that requires you to act differently than a resident.
Like if you were a resident?
Go through channels that are stated in the charter.
I wasn't doing anything as, as a city council person. I was doing it my personal property as a resident. That was mine.
But as a city council person, you're held to a higher standard.
Oh, okay. I think that's why some outside training would be unofficial as well, because that will explain that it's not just Lathrop Village, it's any officials, any elected member and various councils throughout, you know, cities and townships and villages throughout the state and statewide. It's the same idea that it's, once you are an elected official, you do have different rights and responsibilities as that official versus just being a citizen. You aren't just a citizen anymore.
When you have some problem on your own property, I believe that we still are residents.
Well, of course you are that, but it does, that doesn't mean that you, you still have your role as the official that you must go through to, you know, again, this is talking about the consultant. Now, a resident is not gonna call up a consultant, and what's the resident gonna do? They're gonna call the city administration.
I would have called, I would have sent an email to the person I sent an email to as a resident, absolutely.
Okay, well, the, the fact that you did that, but you're not, to that consultant, you are not just a resident, you are also so, so you have a dual role, and it's not to take rights away from you, it's just to understand that you have a, a bigger responsibility, and you should be willing, as the elected official, to not relinquish any of your rights, but to, to recognize that you have this additional responsibility to follow the rules of your office.
I understand, that's one of the reasons that I ran for city council, because I didn't believe that was happening, and so it's very interesting that all of these things are coming up when the charter was not followed, when there were, when city council members had special privileges and all kinds of things, so again, it's quite ironic.
Well, I think that if that's the case, this, this would be addressing that, so just because it wasn't followed before, and now you're on council, I don't think that's necessarily a good reason to say, well, you never did it before, so we're not gonna do it now.
Well, a lot of these things are behavior, not ethics, and I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're creating an ordinance that groups city officials, appointed city volunteers, unpaid employees, all in one thing. We are totally different. Elected officials are chosen by residents. Those are the ones that we are supposed to be serving. Appointed city volunteers, in this case, are normally selected by the mayor, and employees are at will and paid, and from what I've seen, don't always get due process as required by the charter and the personnel manual, so I don't see that these three groups have much in common, that we would be governed under, you know, all of these specific specific rules.
All those groups that you've named all have a function within the city, so they, this is meant to kind of guide and set guidelines for, for behavior, which does involve, ethics does involve behavior. And yes, maybe an employee is different than you, but the employee has their set of guidelines in their job for the city that they need to follow, just like you have different guidelines as a council member, and your job as a council member that you must follow. But the ethics ordinance is just saying that everyone that has a role in representing the city, whether it be as an elected official, an employee, or a volunteer, an appointed person, if they're acting in that, they need to follow the specific rules that apply to them while representing the city, while being part of the city. So they're not acting on their own as, as an individual, they're acting on behalf of the city. So that's why everyone can be lumped together, but yes, there are specifics for each group that they have to follow and be aware of. But this is just setting the, the basic framework for all those that represent and act on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Whatever capacity.
And can we go back to E then? So making a decision outside of proper channels. So would a proper channel include a committee?
I can't, we can't really, I mean, get into every specific that is
Well, I'm just
Come up, but it's just saying
I mean, if I'm a liaison for a committee.
Twenty pages of
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Why are we getting so specific? We, we sort of should know how to act.
We're being general, saying, you as a committee member must act properly.
Correct.
So now, the person on the committee, we would hope, and it depends on what their committee is, it depends on what they've been, you know, what their role is, then they will know in that role how they're supposed to act, but we can't put that in the ethics ordinance specifically, every specific thing that could come up, like if that's what you're asking.
Right, because we do have, we do have like separate committees and study groups and all kinds of other stuff where decisions are made, and I'm just saying, where does, where's the fine line, the proper channel for that?
Well, they will know if they're on a committee, a recommending committee, then they're, they're there to make a recommendation to council.
There, there is no committee out there that can make a decision and act upon that decision without council's approval.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's where we get back to that, so that nobody really is doing that, if that's all allowable.
But what she's saying is that if a committee answering that in, in the specifics in which you presented it, if a committee made a decision to go out and spend money and did not come to council and hired a contractor and authorized them to do that work, they are working outside of what those proper channels should be. And this ethics ordinance, without naming individual committees or groups or commissions, says that you cannot make an official decision outside of proper channels, and so it, it covers everybody. That you cannot make an official decision outside of proper channels. And so it it covers everybody.
And all the proper channels are designated in our ordinances and our charter and the state laws, so.
Yes, they are.
They are.
For the study groups?
Absolutely.
Can you be specific if they're not?
Months ago and haven't received it, so I don't know what the rules are.
The rules are listed in the charter and in the ordinance.
We didn't have committees in the charter, those were. The committees are something fairly new.
Okay, can I go to not page number five H? Right, what, how is council rules of order procedure different than city council governing?
The council rules and orders of procedure are a separate document that's that's approved by a majority of council. But that's a, that's the living breathing piece of uh. Especially the council rules or it's the document that you referenced.
Oh, it's just going right to that.
I actually had a a suggestion there too, that just to eliminate that confusion to say council rules of order and procedure document.
Oh, all right.
Oh, did you want the word document added?
Anything else? Let me say we're eliminating on page seven G.
I feel as legal counsel that that would be um. A proper removal unless it is somehow clarified because it is very open to your interpretation. Criminal investigation. So what is that?
I did clarify that.
Feel like it's necessary, but again, that's up to you all as a council to decide.
And then on page seven.
I'm fine with removing that because it's an investigation and yes, if some, no one is, you're proven innocent. You're innocent until proven guilty, so I think that should be taken out.
And then seven, um page seven, number E. Seven-member ethics board. How did we go from five to seven? And what was the determination for that?
Um, well, one of the things that was originally on there was a three-member ethics board, which everybody agreed was too small, too narrow to look at. So the suggestion that I made was to allow each council member to um suggest a person. That they thought would represent their thoughts, their their feelings on on that ethics board. And then to add myself or the count, the city administrator and the city attorney to that board. So you have a seven-member board that can discuss because I'm already part of that, that investigative process. Uh going forward into that, it was just a suggestion, but to have um rather than. Five people chosen by one person, each one of you can suggest somebody to be on that board and then you feel represented.
Yeah, that was my suggestion to have the city attorney and the city and the city administrator.
Is that what most cities do?
There's not really a, from my review, but everybody.
Does everybody have an ethics board though? Is that pretty common?
Communities do, yes.
Not, if if they have the ethics ordinance and ordinance to make some sort of a discrimination on. Said, having like what Susan stated, one person over narrow focus.
So this board is rotating? How do we determine their?
They would serve the term of the council member that suggested them.
And so it's a rotating position and you always have to put.
Like like all other boards, people rotate and then rotate off.
I'm sure if someone's appointed and then they leave the city and you're still a council member, then you would. If if an issue arose, you would have to.
So it's like hiring my own representation?
No, you just, you just, the suggestion is that that each of us get to make a suggestion of a person, but it's just like any other board that that uh. Um, you know, the whole council would have to approve. This this came out of the discussion that we had last time. Um, when uh we were talking about how how would you, you know, who, when there was. Sentient over the fact that the mayor is the one who is typically the most board makes the initial recommendation and then council approves. And then there was a question back about why does the mayor always get to do it? And I think the city administrator made a good suggestion that that especially with the ethics board, why don't we give everybody the opportunity to suggest a person? Still has to be confirmed by all of council and it also addresses the issue of, um, you know, how do we get the stagger set up initially? While you you put it in an association with each of the uh council's term, council members' term, and then moving forward, it'll police itself.
Yes, you know, so given the choice, would you prefer that each council member has an option to suggest someone? Or that um the mayor alone gets to choose who those people would be and bring that before you as council?
So you're not comfortable with it just being you and Scott or you and Leanne?
I'm not, no.
Okay. Anything else? I don't have anything else in there. Does anybody else?
In nothing else for the ethics ordinance?
I don't think so.
I got one.
Okay.
Um, and we talked a little bit about this the last time we discussed this in section on page seven. In uh section F. Uh where it talks about imposing sanctions on city officials and so forth, I'd like to add uh suspension to the list. Because right now, the, I mean, let me step this, let me step this back by saying, hopefully this ethics ordinance will never have to be used. But if it does have to be used, there are the 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 penalties that are listed in here are act as no deterrent whatsoever. I mean, actually, you know, sanctions, loss of committee assignments, I mean, these these are not uh any, in any way, shape or form a deterrent. Um now, as we talked about in in past discussions on the ethics ordinance, you know, we can't have a board do any type of removal, for example. Because the charter, you know, indicates that the only way a council person would ever be removed is by by committing a felony. Um, and we wouldn't want a board to be able to subvert the will of the vote voters in any any event. But a suspension would still be allowed. We talked about this with the city attorney and I'd like to add suspension to that list. Because it does give the ethics ordinance a little little bit of teeth to it, to to act as a a disincentive for people to violate our ethics policies. As opposed to just saying bad.
I think the rest of this is pretty formal censure, loss of assignments, restrictions, vets, travel. How is that not enough of a sanction?
I I think that's nothing.
Well.
What what are you referred to? And I, when you said you spoke through the attorney.
We we had, we had, we had a discussion with Scott.
But so what do you in uh, what do you mean by suspension?
This board sitting right here had a discussion with Scott. We we talked about it. Uh it was the one where it was the the meeting where you felt you couldn't go on talking about it. Because it wasn't listed on the agenda.
What would suspension involve? Because I think something a little more specific would have to be.
Yeah, length of suspension, I would put that verbiage in there or.
Yeah.
Or what is a suspension of a council member?
Not allowed to participate in meetings, um, you know.
Can you do that?
I, you know, I think that's.
I question, I think that requires a little more specific research if that's the way you want to go. Because that could in effect be a removal. I mean, you're keeping someone, an elected official from participating, making decisions. So I'm not, I'm I'm not comfortable at this point saying that that would be appropriate. So we can, if that's something that the board now decides that you would, every, you know, you. You, the majority of you would like that in there, then I can definitely research to confirm and and confer with Scott further to make sure that that.
So what would be the other option to have teeth in it? Would it be like a censure with censure censorship? I don't think that that really, no formal censure, you have that in there or rough command. I mean, it's a public. It's publicly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think when when we had the discussion, what's what Scott had said is, you know, he he, he had indicated that he thought that 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 it was a possibility. But he indicated he was worried, he was worried about being weaponized, but.
Again, I think we're adding a little too much to this. I think we all have common sense.
I, you know, I feel very strongly and everyone would like, I mean, I will again look at that further. But I personally do have a bit of hesitation at this point to just say, go ahead, because that is. You would hope that the, that these. These sanctions here would be enough. And I guess I'm disappointed that you don't feel not disappointed. But it's a shame that you don't feel that this would be sufficient because, I mean, there's not a whole lot more.
Well, and it does say including removal of office.
Right, that there's a specific.
No, that's.
Under the charter, specific procedures and only certain, certainly state law too.
So, well, right, there's other laws we should be following too, so.
So, I mean, that's something, again, I would be more than happy to clarify. And if that is, if we come to a decision that that is legally appropriate and you would like to include that, then that certainly could be done. But I don't at this point, that would just take a little further research. And what you're referring to then would be having a council member, um, for instance, just not be allowed to participate. In a meeting. I mean, that could affect things like a quorum. Um, so you get, you do get into, as I'm thinking through it, you know, more issues that could be potentially.
It's no ball.
Could affect, yeah. With something like that. And then if it applies uh the suspension. Again, it would be a case by case basis of what the council would want to impose. But would that apply to a employee? So you do, you suspend the employee, do you suspend them with or without pay? That, all that comes into further questioning or something like that. So if you want to move forward, that we do have like more details that would have to be worked out.
Okay.
You want to move forward with that?
What do you think? Jalen, what do you think?
Because basically it's like if it doesn't, it's the ethics violation would have no teeth. Then if there was no um consequences, I guess. As strong as that, I should say.
That would have to meet the criteria of like what is the, how serious is the offense, I guess. Like where do you draw the line from what's just a censure to a, you know, to suspension versus if it's something that would qualify as a removal. Hmm, so that's another.
Yeah, there really isn't a guide, you know, guidelines in there.
I think we should just let that one go. Let's just keep going.
Yes, was there anything else?
Anyone else have anything for the ethics ordinance?
Yes. Uh, first page, section four point one, uh, section F. Affecting adversely the confidence of the public and the integrity of the city of Letherton Village. I think that's very subjective.
Wait, can you say where you are again, please?
First page.
On first page?
Okay, got it. Yeah, yeah.
First section of F. I think that is very um subjective. He determines what's adversely affecting the confidence of the public. I ran for city council because of my lack of confidence and the integrative city leadership. And was voted in because of that, so I don't know who is going to make the determination of what that looks like.
This is more of an intent statement though, so this isn't saying you're gonna, there's a particular thing. That you. It it's not held out in a separate section saying it's a violation. It's just saying that the intent of this is to avoid any action. So by implementing these rules in general, we're trying, the reason we're putting forth this ethical ethics ordinance is church pride. And and avoid anything that would adversely affect the confidence of the public. So I guess I don't follow that it would be necessarily something for you to worry about or say that you're. That it could be misconstrued because it's just stating what what the general purpose of the, of having an ethics ordinance is. One of the general purposes. If that makes, does that make sense?
It does, it does make sense, except it doesn't really fit the current conditions.
Always. It's something to strive for.
What you mean by that?
Or just some of the control, controlling things that have been done to try and control me and my opinions and my. You know, when I go agree with something or even voting no or something like that, sort of, that that's what I'm, what I'm talking about. Someone may have confidence in me, someone may not, someone may have confidence in you, someone may not. That's, it's, as I said, it just seems to be subjective.
But this is, is what um city attorney is saying is that the first sentence is saying the city of Letherton Village intends that its officials. And employees will avoid any action which might result in or create the appearance of, so it's just telling you the intent. I get what you, how you feel. That's, okay.
Okay.
And again, um, councilwoman, um, it's going to apply to everyone. That is on this board right now equally and it will apply going forward when those on the board no longer are here unless it's amended. Or things that would, so it's again, it's not made, it's really not in the intent of the intent statement is not an attack. On any one council member.
And this is not retroactive, was something in place?
Correct, well, we can't say, I mean, going, going forward, yes, because we can't hold. Anyone to be standard when they haven't been enacted yet or the, I mean, hopefully everyone is abiding by the standards that we would like. But it's not beneficially adopted, so until that date, that's when it would go into effect.
In section four point three, standards on page four, five. Uh, there are multiple things that refer to food and refreshments and lodging and transportation. Do all of these things, are we making sure that we're following rules for spending taxpayer dollars?
Anybody more specific?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are restrictions on providing food for things if it isn't, isn't something that's available to the. To all residents or whatever. There's multiple things in here about exceeding a hundred dollars per day per person. Just want to make sure that all of these things follow the rules that we have, are supposed to be following for taxpayer. Uh, spending taxpayer dollars.
Yes, that, I, I mean, the, the way it's written and everything, you know, of course. We've made sure that this follows what the law is.
Administratively, that is something that we follow in our finances, something that we are audited annually on. Um, and uh, you know, these things are, they're just stated in the ethics ordinance to. Um, we affirm that. It's it's not something new. These are things that we do every day.
Then applies all.
Yes.
Under state law.
But yeah, I know, I know it's, I know it's supposed to, there are a lot of rules that are supposed to apply. Um, section four point five, page six. Um. I'm not seeing how it's appropriate for the city administrator to investigate complaints against city council members. When we employ and supervise the city administrator. So that would be like, perhaps like Kelda investigating Susan.
Into that, to that end, um, yes, you, you are the body that. That chooses your city administrator, um, and she does answer to you. But that, that is the body of council, not any one individual council member. So I think that was the intent there and I do know other, you know, other ordinances or other municipalities. That have ethics ordinances do. ordinances or other municipalities that have ethics ordinances do utilize their city manager or city administrator in that sort of function, even though they are under the auspices of the council, because again, it is only one council member versus the entire body that she does respond to. The entire body, not just to that one council member that may be having a complaint against them.
I think that's a, a fine lines, there's some way to do an outside a person. I mean, that could impact negatively impact her too, because if someone's investigated and it turns out to be nothing, and it is a you know, could impact her.
Well, and I think she would have to answer to the rest of the council, but I mean, if if she's investigating, she finds that it's nothing, it, it's just, she's probably the most appropriate person because she knows the, the city. She knows what's going on in the city, you hired her, you put your confidence in her.
She runs the.
To do that, um, so to spend money to hire an outside consultant or something and who's gonna fill them in, you know, it, it's just administratively, and I don't see there, there's like an ethics question to that, or but you have council can all decide if you, if you think it's, if the rest of council members think likewise, I don't wanna.
And what if it's the city administrator, then what?
Um, don't we have something in there? City is. I'm sure, I mean, if it's the administrator, clearly it would go to council. I mean, and into your point, your other point, Karen, that your previous point under D on the next page, um it does state that in addition to complaining to the city administrator, all city council members have a responsibility to intervene if they.
That's the one we crossed on.
So.
No. That's the one we're questioning, isn't it? Says receiving complaints from the city administrator.
Um, doesn't look like there, there's a specific.
We, right, but the process is.
Covered that for the city administrator.
Yeah, if, if I receive a, a complaint um, and I find that there is justification in that complaint, then I'm supposed to bring that complaint to council. And that requires council to act upon that.
And just to, the investigation that's being conducted by the administrator, excuse me, is not, that's not an an adjudication, so to speak, there's still, there's still the, the uh, process of appointment of an independent body an ethics board that will review and, and will make the determination. It's not, the administrator is not the one passing judgment on this.
No, I just have to determine if there's merit to that, and then it goes to.
Somebody.
Well, right, right.
But as you said, it's not just for the people sitting here, I'm speaking from personal experience, so. Just want to know how that was, should be handled, or should have been handled, should be handled going forward.
I guess. The ordinance specifies that, that's.
So are you saying?
How that's handled that process that is laid out in that section, section four, four point five of the process.
Is that the one that deals with? If it's the. The administrator or city officials? Doing it to a city council person, to a resident who's not someone was, yeah. So that's the one that was just added?
Does this cover interactions with residents also? Or is just if.
If it's inappropriate, if it's in, in, inappropriate unethical interaction, yes.
Would you feel better if language was added there that if the city administrator uh, is the person uh, in question, then the city attorney would do the investigation to begin with, and then determine if it needs to go to um the ethics board? What would be your suggestion?
Oh, they're still on D, okay.
Let's, we'll talk this together.
Rather than just removing the language completely, there has to be a process that is there. So if, if it's something with the rest of the board entered that additional language that if it is the city manager that is in question or accused of an ethics violation, that the city attorney would initiate that investigative process to see if there's merit behind that, and then take it through that process.
Yeah, I mean, sadly, we can't guarantee objectivity.
Of the city attorney.
So is that going to be added to subsection B?
I'd see.
Somewhere in that section.
Isn't D, what you said was questionable?
Um, no, she was talking about the language down um, below there that you crossed out above the um, that section there, um, section G there.
But this is about all city council members, she'll have a responsibility to, to intervene when they learn of actions of another city council member or other city officials?
Just means that they should take action and report that as well, not just turn a blind eye. It's just clarifying that city council members as well, if they become aware of something that they feel could be a violation, um, that they need to make a report to the city administrator. So it's just further clarifying that not just citizen complaints, but if councils also have a responsibility if they feel that they witnessed something that needs to be reported.
Anything else? Uh, yeah, I'm thinking the ethics ordinance doesn't address some of these other things, overall lack of respect for residents. Equal and fair treatment and consideration for residents. harassment and discrimination towards residents by staff and council. Withholding of public information from residents and or city council members. Um, I also would like to add something in that any committee or group that meets regarding spending taxpayer dollars should be required to follow the requirements of the open meetings app.
Well, we have to follow the requirements of the open meeting app by law.
Uh, you don't, you told me you don't have to on the, on the infrastructure study group, you said it's not an elected body, so you don't have to follow the open meetings app. So I would like to put that in there, that anybody. Spending money.
But would that be a part of ethics, though? Would that be under?
Well, I mean, it does not necess.
So again, let me, let me interact here, because the, the subcommittees, again, are not expending any funds, they're not a body that has the ability to make that decision. They're a recommending body. If, if you're going to be imposing standards that are stricter and higher than state law, that's potentially problematic. Now, we had discussed this as a policy that, which would be applicable in the next uh, second section of the council rules and procedures that minutes could be kept, that minutes could be uh, subject to disclosure for a certain period of time in subcommittee meetings, but extending the state law to bodies that are not covered by the state law, like I said, is potentially problematic. Um, and I don't, I don't agree with you that uh, it should be included in the ethics ordinance. This, again, this is not a whole list of everything that uh potentially could have influenced or affected one council member to be put into this ordinance. This is supposed to be standards that all, all individuals in the city can, can look to, residents can look to and know that their, their elected body, their appointed body, their hired employees and consultants of the city are all adhering to the same standards. I, I think this review and exercise has gone far, far deeper into what really never was intended to be uh, what it's transformed itself into, and I, and I think we need to pull back a little bit from, from that, because that's not what the intent of this ordinance is. This, we, we're not rewriting the city charter uh, via the ethics ordinance.
Okay, but that's kind of what has been done, and the red marks and everything else, so.
I disagree, I don't, I wouldn't say that at all. I mean, you're, you're bringing in other sections of, of that are, there are ordinances in, in effect, there are provisions of the charter in effect. The duplication of that within the ethic ordinance is not appropriate and not necessary.
We don't have anything covering those committees or groups. There aren't any, any requirements for those groups. They have a group that.
Exactly, there are no requirements for, because there are no requirements in state law.
We don't have to have them, though. We didn't have them previously. I just, I just think it's a barrier to transparency for residents. The, these conversations happen, these decisions are made, the recommendations are made, one group have recommended over thirty million dollars.
But can we stay on, can we stay on task?
Of the open meetings.
That doesn't have anything to do with the ethics part, and it would follow if it was a um, with a governing um, body, so.
And you know, you can take it up with your state representative and see if maybe they would consider expanding the Freedom of Information Act and the Open Meetings Acts to cover some of those areas that you feel are not adequately protected.
Or, or we make changes at this level, doesn't have to be state directed.
But it's not going to be in the ethics ordinance, is there anything?
Rules of order and procedure, I would think.
That's what Scott had mentioned, that you could add that about minute taking, if that's.
Okay, well, we're working on that also.
Want to do.
But the problem is, so Karen, what you're suggesting is that we have a, we, city of Laker Village imposed standards and requirements for subcommittees that are more stringent than the state law. That's like saying if an individual goes five miles an hour over the speed limit in Michigan, in the city of Laker Village, we decided it's going to be a felony, because we want to be tougher on our, on the people that pass through our community. You can't do that, you can't supersede the, the requirements of the state law. So if you want to make it.
Where are the requirement for this group? Because I've asked for that, asked for that six months ago and have not received it. There are no terms, there are no requirements, there is nothing. I don't, I just don't think that it's good for the city, I don't think it's good for the residents, I don't think it's good for transparency. So I don't know what's wrong with having all meetings, all meeting groups follow the open meetings app, that's.
So. So with all due respect, this is not going to be a part of the ethics ordinance, we kind of got that, right? But we also have thirty minutes to get through the studies, um, the study session, and we do have someone else that is waiting to speak. So is there anything else for the ethics ordinance that you would like to discuss?
Okay. Anyone else for the ethics ordinance? Thank you.
Now, we're going, we're.
We're moving to the water loss investigation, the phase two, that's, I mean, I'm just going exactly by what I was.
That's part of the, that's part of the. I think she was confused over.
Oh. What you were saying, that it wasn't part of the ethics, but it's part of this.
Go ahead.
Uh, the first page, council meeting agenda. The agenda for our council and study meetings shall be prepared by the mayor and or mayor pro temp, I would like to remove and mayor pro temp is replaced, is fills in for the mayor when the mayor isn't available, not as a team.
So you're, so you're, you're, as the existing mayor pro temp, you're, you're trying to change that, because you disagree and dislike the way that I conduct myself. This is, this is.
This always, this hasn't changed.
No, it was not, it's always.
Always been like that, and it should always be like that in the future, because you don't like me, doesn't mean we should.
It's not, it has nothing to do with you, it's about equal access to information and to, and to um you know, setting the direction.
Like I was saying before, for eleven years of being on council and being, being mayor pro temp to um mayor Brock, we always met and discussed the agenda beforehand. So it, it's, it hasn't been anything different, and that's not something that you.
Did you share, did you share that with others?
You never asked me, you never asked me, you just accused me. You never asked me, you just accused me of wrongdoing, you never asked me if we did that.
Asked you what, well, you haven't done it since I've been here since November, so.
I haven't done what?
Shared what was on the, going to be on the agenda, asked.
So I think we're a little confused, because what we're talking about in that particular part is that the mayor and the mayor pro temp, whoever that may be, will meet with the city administrator, whoever that may be, to discuss the agenda. That's the only thing we're talking about right now.
Right, and I.
And, and what I'm saying is, and I'm saying that going back of all the years that I have been on council, and I'm only doing this from a historical standpoint, is that the prior mayor, Mayor Brock and I, and the previous mayor pro temp, and the administrator would sit down to put the agenda together, and then it would be sent out. It's never been anything different.
And that doesn't just you as a council person from suggesting items to be on the agenda, so.
Yes, actually, it has, because you have asked for things to be on the agenda.
Uh, page eleven, uh, attendance at conferences, the, the adding newly elected official shall be required to attend the newly elections, training offered through the Michigan Municipality within the first six months of being sworn in. That isn't offered all the time, we missed it when Barb and I came on.
It's always offered every time.
It is offered, but we weren't notified of it until it had already taken place.
Jalen went to it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry, but it's, it's always offered, it's always.
Yes. And you just add in there that as long as it's off, it's as possible, if possible, if, if it's offered. Of course, if there's some issue that, you know, for whatever reason, MML doesn't offer it, and it's not gonna take it as soon thereafter as possible.
In the first six months, I think.
It wasn't even available, they had it one time. That's what I'm saying.
I don't think, I don't think it needs to be changed personally, because I don't think an ethics board is, is, is going to sanction somebody because they couldn't attend a training that wasn't available.
Well, then it doesn't need to be in there.
Well, it's a procedure additionally in there or as closely as possible, um, or as reasonably possible to that, because I do believe training is important for all newly elected councils. You are elected to represent your constituents, and it would be like going to the doctor, and the doctor tells you, oh, I haven't been to training at all since I got my license forty years ago, I know everything there is to know. Um, training is very essential for you as a councilperson. I go to training because training is important for me as a city administrator. I want to continue to hone my skills and come back and be able to represent my position to be the best city administrator that I can be, and that additional training helps me. So for you as councilpersons, I believe that that additional training benefits you, and it benefits the citizens that you represent.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say something here. Um, that's just simply not true. At the very first council meeting, I spoke for three or four minutes about the benefits of the, of the MML newly elected training, which is exactly how Jalen knew of, I'm sorry, which is, which is exactly how Jalen knew about it, and he will tell you that. You were at that meeting, so to say that it wasn't mentioned ever before.
Didn't say what it was, and they didn't reach out. I got a, a email from MML in February or March, it was long gone. Yeah, and I.
Jalen was able to.
I, okay, but I am a believer in lifelong learning and professional development and all of those things. But some of the organizations aren't, they're in business to, to, to make money, to offer uh levels of training and whatever, to, to, it, it isn't necessarily something that is uh.
But the newly elected's training is specifically for people that are newly elected, that have not been in the position before, to help you understand how to read your charter, to help you understand how to read the ordinance, to help you understand the process of uh, council meetings, to help you understand um, the roles of the mayor, the mayor pro temp, council as a body, help you understand staff, what their role is, how we all work together. That's the benefit that you gain from going to that.
But that's, I, that's not what I see the effect was, if, if people have been to train through this.
Well, maybe your training will be something that will be beneficial to you, and, and I think to continue to put accusations out there is really not beneficial in the ethics ordinance, in the policy development, it's something that you want to work toward making a difference, and, and this is one of those ways that, you know, really put it really puts your words into action.
Well, are there other organizations that could, that could be included? Besides MML, someone takes other trainings, and you don't understand why it's specifically MML.
Because that's our state league. They specifically, it's a Miss, Michigan Municipal Organization.
I understand what it is, but, but we hired them to do the hiring review, we hired them for other things, we get our insurance from them, all of the pieces, so I don't know that that's again objective.
It's, it's what they do. It is what they do rather than another organization.
Support cities, almost all cities across the state.
To support staff, to support city council members, to support.
Like, like the Michigan Municipal League's convention that they have coming up in October. That is really geared towards council members. Towards council staff can attend that, but it is really geared toward training and education of council persons, and you were alerted of that. I did give you opportunity to go to that. And I also think that potentially if you weren't alerted in a timely manner, please remember that the administrator stepped down prior to the election, or it was right around that time.
Yeah.
You know, so some of those things fell through the crack, but going forward, that is part of the role. It is the role of the city administrator to make sure that newly electeds are onboarded, that you are given the opportunity for training, and I will ensure that that does happen. You know, when there are training opportunities that are available, I do pass that information on to you, and I highly encourage you to attend that. So it, it, it is something that does benefit you.
School, I'm a school board. I was, I was, I was changing school boards.
But it is, it is not like.
I'm talking about the organization itself.
But even that is different. Even that is different. Because we don't operate the same way. There are nuances in each of those. So you can't say that it, it's the same.
I didn't say it was the same. I was talking about the structure and.
It's important to network as well. I heard a lot of, of city officials and municipal officials in my career that just like it for that, and find great benefit from that.
Right. What's, what's our budget for even doing that? I mean, things you sound very.
Those are baked into the budget to allow for council to attend training that is already in the budget. Because we believe that training is essential, I believe, and, and it's something that's if it's not adequate going forward, it will be put into the budget going forward, because I believe all of staff should be allowed the opportunity to go for training. I believe council should go for training because it helps you be better at what you do and to come back and serve your community.
Is there anything else?
Okay, now we're going to move to the water loss investigation.
Do you have a memo before you for the water loss investigation that we have realized that there's a significant amount of water loss, roughly forty percent that we're experiencing each year? Even though we experience that loss, our water use from SAKWA has not changed to support that. So we believe that there is a loss, a leak or something somewhere. And we have worked with OHM to come before us tonight and kind of answer questions. And there's a proposal for ten thousand dollars for them to clamp onto the existing meter to see if they can locate, if the leakage is there. There's an additional cost of seventeen hundred to have that, that testing, the actual meter clamp on done, that, that work done for you, and that information will come back to us to help us kind of pinpoint where that loss is at. So we do have a representative with us from OHM. If you have questions that you would like to ask, the proposal is pretty well explanatory in there, but please feel free to ask questions, and if you'd like to add anything additional to that, I will return it over to you.
Good evening, council. I'll just quickly introduce myself. My name is Ref Gronovac. I work with OHM Advisors. You'll see the proposal was signed by one of my partners, Vicki Plak. Unfortunately, she had an emergency come up here over the weekend and had to leave town, so. I did familiarize myself with what we put together in some of the backgrounds, speaking with Vicki, and so we can hopefully answer any questions if it's too challenging. I might have to get back to you, but I think it's well, because we worked on that, so. I, I don't, I'll just refer to any questions you might have.
Yeah, I, I've got some questions, Ref. I'm going to be a little verbose here, just to provide background, because I'm familiar with a lot of this stuff, because because of my role on the infrastructure committee, and I was the one who actually found OHM and was involved in some of the discussions, since I was invited from the administration to participate. So, right now, we have a twelve inch mag meter, which is our primary source meter from, from SAKWA. And one of the things that was presented to us at, at the last meeting was that, that, that particular meter is optimized for a flow rate of eleven hundred to fourteen thousand gallons per minute. And the error rate associated with, with that meter goes up as the, the flow rate goes down, as it drops under that eleven hundred gallon per minute threshold. So when, and again, these are all things that Vicki floated to us, and I'm kind of, for the benefit of, of council as well, some of the residents. So when, when the flow rate drops from, from eighty-eight to eleven hundred gallons per minute, there's a one percent error. When it goes from thirty-four gallons per minute to eighty-eight gallons per minute, there's a three percent error, and when it drops under fifty-five gallons per minute, the manufacturer has indicated that the, the error rate is unpredictable. And those, as Vicki had described, those are lab conditions, and she said in her experience, outside of the lab, it's actually the, the error rates tend, tend to be higher than that. So our, our average flow rate is three hundred gallons per minute, which is dramatically under the, the low, low end optimization of, of the, of the existing meter, and that's and, and our maximum, you know, at any given point, our, our maximum usage is about six hundred gallons per minute, which is still, you know, fifty percent under the, the optimized flow, flow, flow rate. So the, the, the theory that, that Vicki presented to us is that when we get to these, these low flow rates, you know, what, what the data is showing is that the, the meter is going from zero to eighty-two or zero to one forty. Actually, it's mostly zero to one forty, back and forth between the two. So so when we're, when we're actually using ten gallons or twenty gallons or thirty gallons, you know, per, per minute in those low flow situations, it's reading one forty. And so, so we, Vicki had indicated that she is fairly confident that that's, that's the smoking gun. So when we, when we left our, our last meeting, one of the things that, what we had concluded, I guess at that point, was that OHM was going to look at the replacement of that mag meter, which is with a more appropriate size, the twelve inch meter, with an more appropriate size, six inch meter. And then what, what came back to us in terms of the proposal was, was, was a little bit of a surprise to me, and that you know, what, what the suggestion is, is, is that we're going to put a clamp on meter down below, and then we're going to compare the, the readings of, of the two meters to show that you know, that is the smoking gun. And so, long-winded way to get to my question. So the question to me is, it seems, it seems to me like what we should be doing is going straight to the meter replacement, because even if the, if the, if the meter is not the smoking gun that we hoped it is, there's still a, a tremendous amount of of, of potential to reduce our errors because we are such a low-flow community. And what's going to happen i- is if we go, the route that we're going is we're going to pay ten thousand dollars for a consulting fee, and then seventeen hundred dollars for, I forgot the name of the organization to get the.
SW Controls.
Yeah, so, so then we go to SW Controls, and we pay seventeen hundred, so we're paying like twelve thousand dollars. And, you know, if we find out that it's the smoking gun, then we've got to start, oh, sorry. Yeah, we find out that it's a smoking gun, then we know we have to replace the meter, and then we have to, you know, go through OHM again to do more consulting to, you know, because it's not just a simple replacement of the meter. We have to look at high-flow events like when there's a fire. So there might be two six-inch meters, one for high-flow, one, one for low-flow. And so what, what could potentially end up happening is we're, we're going to, we're going to end up paying two consulting, you know, having two consulting arrangements, when I think, unless I'm missing something, that, that we could actually have a single consulting arrangement to just replace the meter. And what we did confirm today is that SAKWA is the one who has to pay for the replacement of the meter. So there's, there's no cost to us there. So if we replace the meter, it seems to me that there's, there's a benefit right away of replacing the meter, even if it isn't the smoking gun. Eventually, you know, we're, we're going to, well, not eventually, because we don't have to pay for the meter, but eventually, I guess it would, it would, we would save enough money through some of these low-flow events where the, where the error goes up high to cover the cost of, you know, consulting, of consulting arrangement. So I guess my question is, is can we do this in a, a single step instead of spreading it out into two steps? Which, which would be more expensive, so just going right to replacing the six-inch meter. That makes sense?
It does. In, in the background, I don't know how much of council was aware of all the background.
That, that's why I kind of was verbose in it.
For everyone. I think the, it, it is interesting that, so SAKWA would potentially bear the cost of replacing the meter. I do think the overall cost for the replacement, you know, whether it's going to be two in line meters working together, smaller diameter, it's going to be more cost than just the seventeen hundred dollars here for the temporary one. So I think the, the belief here is, from Vicki's perspective, this is a pretty low-cost approach to verify what we believe is the smoking gun actually is. And, and to what degree, because of the data that we're going to reflect over that, we try to help validate that, hey, we saw a significant discrepancy between these two meters placed on the same, same line and in the same configuration, and, and hopefully open up some dialogue with SAKWA about whether there's needs to be some correction for that as well, and it will help you then inform to what the appropriate sizing would be for a replacement meter, whether it's two of them in tandem, and what, because there's different ways you can do the metering based on the flows you're having. So I still think that our, our recommendation would be it's a relatively low-cost investment before you actually jump into the, the overall replacement.
And, and I have a question too, that, you know, would a six-inch meter be able to handle a high-flow issue? You know, if we had something during that test phase that was a high-flow issue.
Right.
There, you know, we had a huge fire or something of that nature, would, would they be able to handle that?
Right, and that's why I mentioned, when, when we talked with, with, actually, two comments on that. You know, when we, when we were talking in the last meeting, you know, Vicki's in, in initial assessment was, well, we would probably need to, you know, two six-inch meters, one to handle a high-flow event, like a fire, and one for for other rats. And then, as we discussed that a little bit further, and, and this is why I was a little surprised by the, by the actual proposal. I can't remember the name of the other woman who was in the meeting. Susan, right, yeah. Lots of Susans, lots of Susans, lots of Scots.
Yes.
But, you know, Susan had made the comment that, you know, she thought that there was a possibility that, that we might even be able to given our, our, our normal low-flow rate, we might even be able to handle a high-flow situation with a single meter, and she was going to look into that. And, and again, that's why I was a little surprised when I saw the, the strap-on meter, you know, proposal, so.
And some of the costs in here for OHM's time is, I mean, I think we did an initial scope for work for a relatively small amount. We had to just help see if we could glean from the data that you already had, what might be some of the opportunities for this, this gap over the loss. And there were four hypotheses. We kind of ranked them in what we believe to be the most likely cause, and then for some reason, we find that that's not the case. The other ones still could be by a cross elimination, or there's a possibility it's a little combination of more than one. So we, we've kind of already spent some additional effort.
Right.
Trying to help really dive into the data. We're, we're trying to recoup a little bit of that with this. And as well, whether it's with this meter or a new replacement, the same data crunching of, hey, what, what is going to be the best approach to meter this connection under the flow range demands that you have with the community, is effort that you're going to spend either in, in either scenario as well, so.
Okay.
What happened going back to the twelve-mile meter, which is what we had before the, the switch was made into the seventeen?
I'll just, I don't know the whole history of that.
Yeah, well, there, there is, there is no working twelve-mile meter. SAKWA is in the process of, of, I, I don't know what the latest update is on that, but they're supposed to be, they, I know they, I think though, my memory's terrible, but I think it was about a month or two ago, Scott Ringler indicated that SAKWA kind of ordered the meter, a twelve-inch meter, that they were going to, I mean, whatever the, whatever the replacement meter was for, for that, and then it has to be installed, and it has, you know, they got to tear up the road to install it and get it installed, and all that kind of stuff, so.
So if that happens, do we still have to put out this money to replace the other one at eleven mile?
They're different meters, so, yes.
Not used to being told to use the mic. Right now, we only have one operating meter, so having this second meter, doing the work at this meter would allow us to have two meters running, so we have the capability for two meters running in the event that one fails. Right now, if the one we have fails, it fails, and we have no wire.
Right, and then I think the other, I think the other issue too was that the, the, coming in on the twelve-mile side was a much higher pressure than coming in on the eleven-mile side, and I think there was, there was some, some belief from SAKWA that a lot of, you know, we have a lot of water main breaks, because we have an old system, a lot of, a lot of the water mains are over a hundred years old, and so it was felt that, that that high pressure was causing some of the water, water main breaks.
But hasn't that been switched since like two thousand eighteen, seven, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen? We're still having water breaks.
Still an old system, but we're having, we're having, few, I remember when I first got on council, I think we had thirty-some odd water, thirty, I think it was maybe thirty-six water main breaks the first year, something like that. I don't know if you remember. But we definitely don't have that many now, but.
This is happening, as we speak here, the, the gap in the what you're paying for versus what you're selling to your residents. And so this clamp-on meter is a relatively quick, it's available to temporary situation, whereas the the process to spec out and finalize the exact replacement for a permanent meter, and then the procurement of those meters in some of today's economy could be quite a bit of lead before it's actually up and running. So this, this is a pretty, we can, we can probably get I think in the proposal, we'll probably have the meter installed within the first thirty days, and then days back and analyze to the city within thirty days after that, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I actually just, just, I mean, I guess some potential good news is the, you know, I, I asked earlier today about our, our water loss rate, and over the last four months, it's averaging twenty-three percent, which, which is still very high, but is lower, and I think, you know, some of that probably has to do with a lot of the billing issues that we've, we've discovered. So that's a good thing too. A little, little bit of good news in a, in a in a situation where we've got a lot of water going down the drain, and hate to say it that way, but.
So can I ask a question? Will, will we be leaving the rental meter on until the permanent meter comes?
No, we just proposed to put it in there for one week.
Just a one week?
Just to, just to prove the hypothesis. Well, I mean, but, but, although Barb, I mean, I think one of the things that, you know, we briefly touched on is that you know, if we do find out that this is the smoking gun, and that we've been paying, you know, that, that we've been overbilled by SAKWA, the next step, and we talked about this with, with Vicki and Sue, is, you know, to do an actuarial, you never say the word, and I'm, and I have a degree in math, an actuarial analysis to determine, you know, what, how many units of water have we been overbilled? And then to go back to SAKWA and say, look, you know.
Adjustment.
Right, and, and, you know, get some type of adjustment or, or credit on future water purchases to recoup some of that money, because, I mean, that's critical dollars that, that we need as a city that would help us a lot, do a lot of things, so.
Well, I see that it says four hundred thousand lost revenue each year. How many years are we talking? Since seventeen?
Yeah, yeah, and again, that's, it's lost revenue, not lost cost, just to be specific.
Right.
Not that there's a, and not that it makes a difference, they're both bad, but.
Yeah.
Well, we had this in a report almost a year ago. Said this is, where's the leak? Something happened in twenty seventeen. This is not a small meter problem. It's a bigger problem. It's SAKWA, and they're a big, under-respected.
Been on our investigation.
Yeah, it's almost a year ago. That's a lot of money.
So we're, that's, the proposal is to approve? OHM, okay, so, and then that's separate from SW Controls?
Yeah, two separate costs. We, we don't actually provide the clamp-on meter, SW, we coordinated with them to spec out the material, and then we'll forward it and give it installed.
Oh, okay, I was going to say you will reach out to them when you're. Okay.
You want a question?
Oh, I do have a question. It says.
It says client responsibilities. The village will provide a single point of contact to OHM advisors. Who, is that gonna be Susan? Who is that? Okay.
Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go up to mayor and council comments. Actually, it's supposed to be public comments first. So we'll go to public comments first and then we'll go to bearing council comments, so. And for the public comments, we have.
Be sure. My name is Anne Susannas. I have a house here in Lake River Village. And I think I met the wrong meeting. I'm interested in the discussion that you folks have been having about what to do with the lake property where the lake groups live. And I think in your agenda, you call it the house in the woods. Because when I originally called about the meeting, it wasn't on your agenda. So I thought I would come to this meeting and just see what your timeline is and what's happening on it, whether or not you are considering whether you're still looking into it as a possible nature area or you've already made it. The reason I ask is, I've done this kind of work. I have a naturalist environment in my home for a long, long time. And I've already been in there twice and made started doing a couple of plant lifts and things like that. And I'm interested in seeing what's there. And also I was interested in knowing what work has been done in the past on that site, because I have the feeling that other people have worked in there some. And I would be interested in doing a little bit more in there, but I wanted to know what your timeline was. And I know you don't have time to go into that now. Is there some way I can get that information or come in and talk to somebody? And I wondered also, what's your timeline? Are you gonna make a decision tonight at your meeting or what? You know that.
So we are gonna be discussing how the work tonight at seven thirty. And we will, at the next meeting, we'll be discussing.
Well, not that, you mean, right.
It's tonight, but it's the next meeting. The first one with the study session and the next one is the meeting. So we'll be discussing the house in the woods property next.
But what is your timeline for it as far as making a decision? Is it likely to make a decision tonight and what?
It can only help we make a decision tonight. Now, hopefully we'll make a decision this evening.
Okay, and and that will be before the end of your meeting, right?
Um, yeah, yes. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
Mary Moyn, resident. During the ethics discussion on. Thank you. During the discussion on the ethics ordinance, Councilwoman Canes made a statement that I just cannot leave on the record with, without challenging it. She stated that the residents' meeting to discuss a recall campaign of the council person was unethical. Political organizations, political organizing is never illegal and it's not unethical. Recall campaigns take place across this country every year. There was just recently one for the governor of California. So please do not state that political organizing is unethical. It is not.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I, Warren Barris, resident. I'm not sure why there's so much contention about an ethics ordinance. I'm surprised about it and disappointed about it. There seems to be that Barbara Canes and Karen Miller both seem to be really highly agitated in the meeting and about these things. And I just really truly don't understand why you would be like that about an ethics ordinance that most cities have. I'm surprised we don't have one. And I'm not really sure what what the problem, what the problem is there. I was really disappointed, Ms. Miller, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Miller, when you're shaking your head about not doing training when I think it's so important. And and worrying about the ethics ordinance being retroactive, I can imagine why, why. But I, so I just, I'm just sitting here wondering, why are we having a problem with the ethics ordinance?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Just raise your hand. I can see it.
Just barely.
Okay. So we'll move to mayor and council comments. So for me, I don't, I can't answer your questions about the ethics because I think that it is something that all cities have and this is something that we should also adopt. And I I personally believe, yeah, it's it's big, like I said earlier, it's because of situations that we have found ourselves in, that we need to have some policies and procedures that's in place. And so, I mean, I can only answer that from my perspective. I think that that was all that I had, I think, that's all I had to answer. I believe that's all that I have. But I will yield it to, is there any other councilperson that would like to make any comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say, we do have an ethics ordinance already in place that has been in place. And so I'm not sure why it's, all of these extra things are added, but we do have an ethics ordinance. And also I asked, it was retroactive because of past violations, not mine, others, and that I was going through and read a list, but if it's not retroactive, it doesn't.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Okay, I'm gonna adjourn the study session.